Hi.
Hey, so welcome to another episode of Mundaline Minute. This one is a little different. I am rocking the fly didn't look and Kara's rocking the crazy mom look.
I know, look at this, what, this is, okay moms, if any moms listen, this is postpartum hair growth coming back.
Are you in a rocking chair?
I'm in my glider in my baby's nursery.
It's awesome. And I'm in a hotel room.
Quiet in the house.
For now.
Yeah, until my son barges in, hey mom!
Right? And I'm in a hotel room on a very short overnight, and this has been our struggle with with recording and getting these on a consistent schedule is we have lives. And my schedule can be a bit sporadic, erratic, crazy. So we're trying a new method this week and doing Zoom. So.
Again, people should just listen and not watch us and then this wouldn't matter.
True. Quick disclaimer, we are not in my basement. My wife is not upstairs. And I've been in a hotel room at work using a personal computer and personal Zoom account and Kara's on her own iPad. And again, no taxpayer dollars are used in creation or distribution of this podcast.
I have, I should have the disclaimer, I should have the disclaimer, I'm in my house where I have two kids and a husband and two dogs, so.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, it's your turn.
Yeah, if it is, if you hear loud noises or crashing and banging, just go with it.
Just go with it. Just go with it. It's not the cats this time.
It's dogs.
Yes, the dogs instead. Uh, so I wanted to change things up real quick and kind of give a brief overview before we start talking about things. So we are going to recap the board meeting, looking over at my iPad here. So this was the board meeting on Monday, July 12th. I think this is our 12th episode, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah. So in this, this board meeting, we, we, we actually did a lot. It was a quick board meeting, but we, we got a lot moving, I should say. So Tonality Brewing did a presentation and we got them moving towards taking over the old fire station and public works facility on Seymour. And we'll talk more about that. We recognized employee for their, is it 30 years for Darryl Hughes?
Yeah, 1991, which by the way, 1991 was 30 years ago.
Whoa. That explains why fanny packs are coming back. We started, well, I won't say started, but we moved along to the sale of property on Tower Road. This was property that we received for free that we sold for $600,000. And let's see. We did some big grants. The fiscal year 2022 appropriations ordinance. Paid bills of about $800,000, which is less than normal.
Yeah, okay, hurry up, keep going, this is supposed to be fast.
Oh, sorry, the fire cost recovery fee. So we talked about this in the last episode where the fire department can bill out for services that are used specifically for motor vehicle accidents. So we, we got that accomplished and that's in the works. We did some professional services agreements, Park Street funding. And then we talked about the self-storage facility rental fee. And that did not go into effect, but we'll talk more about that in a bit. So let's go back to the top of the agenda. If you're here for the long haul, we will kind of dive into more, more items. So meeting was called to order at seven, did the pledge of allegiance, the attendance, approval of minutes.
Wait, wait, should we, we had committee of the whole, want to talk about that?
Yeah, so committee of the whole is a quick one here, actually. Do you want to dive into it? You want me to? Because I can sum it up as I did in the board meeting.
What?
Like, I can sum it up in three sentences like I did for that guy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You summed it up for the guy that was presenting.
So, yeah, we had a committee of the whole to talk with NYMEC, which is electric aggregate. So the supplier for the electricity to ComEd that you get to your, your home. And to sum it up real quick is we were presented with a few options and we, we had to choose whether we were going to go 0% green energy, 50% green energy, 100%. And what level we wanted to go to, if we wanted to be at the EPA, be part of the EPA program, which put our name on a website and gave us two signs that we could put like highway signs. And we would lose a lot of money for that. What was that, 16,000, I think? It was a, it was a lot of money we would lose to get highway signs. Right. So, excuse me, I, I I said to the guy, I said, okay, let me sum this up. You're a data broker, you're brokering data between power companies and power suppliers. And you figured out a way to keep people at certain levels where they are not going to see a rate change from ComEd, but that the village could still receive money and compensation at the end of the year as a payout for using this program. So it's, it's smart on our end because we're going to make about 35,000, $32,000 this next year from NYMEC. That's the expected amount. So we move forward with that at 50% green energy. So we're paying credits towards green energy. Not that it's all actual, like when you flip the switch and the light turns on, you can't say that.
Windmills not gonna turn.
Right, the windmill is not necessarily turning behind it, but that there's green energy being fed into the system at 50% for Mundaline's usage as a whole over the year.
Yes, and, and to point out, this isn't like a novel thing. Other municipalities do this. We are probably silly for not doing it in the past.
And we use NYMEC for 15 years.
Yeah.
Before last year, when, when they couldn't beat ComEd's rates is when we changed it. And then now we're back because they have a new program.
Correct.
So, okay, so back to the board meeting. We
Hold on, I pulled my agenda.
Yep, public commentary, and then into presentations and awards. So presentations was Tonality Brewing and the, the two gentlemen from Tonality. Was it Dawn and Zach?
Yes.
And they came and presented what their, their concept is, what their plan is to open a brewery and restaurant, like a craft brewery.
Yeah.
At the corner of Division and Seymour in the public works facility that's an old fire station. And we later on, we voted on, and we'll just kind of cover it here, voted on what that, that incentive looks like for them. So we are selling them the building at, Kara's at 340,000. $340,000. So this is not giving the developer the land for free or for a dollar, we're selling to them. It's in a TIF district, so tax increment financing is playing a part of this, and they're going to get some sales tax reimbursement as well. And they're also getting
Sales tax that they generate.
From the sales tax they generate, that's correct.
Yeah.
And they're also getting big funds, big grants, just as any, any business in Mundaline can apply for big grant.
Which we actually voted on later on for a different restaurant, so.
Correct.
Opens everyone.
The only change there is that we increased the amount of big grants that this business can use. And there's caps as to how much sales tax sharing, it's over five years. In, and items that they use for the big grant can't be used for different sales tax sharing or different reimbursements. So there's, there's pretty strong language there. So that did pass and I'm not sure of their opening date. Kara, do you have that?
You know what? Someone asked me that too, and we didn't ask that. And I felt so silly for not asking that. So I, I'm going to call Amanda today about something else because I posted this on my Facebook, my personal Facebook wall. And one of the local yoga teachers in town asked me for their contact because she wants to get to do beer and yoga, which other breweries do, which would be so fun. So.
With goats, too?
Will you stop?
Okay, sorry. Next up was the appropriation ordinance and public hearing. So the, the appropriation ordinance we have to do within the first three months of the fiscal year. So we pass the budget, move into the fiscal year. We have three months to set that appropriation ordinance. To do that, we have to post about it 10 days in advance, has to be circulated in a newspaper that has distribution. And Mundaline, there's a whole bunch of legalities that go behind how we do what we do when it comes to taxing. And that's what we did on Monday night. And the, the hearing is literally reading a script and asking for public commentary, presenting the information that's in the appropriations ordinance and the budget. There was no public commentary, should also add, there was no public comment. Oh, there was public commentary during the meeting.
Yeah, oh, we, oh.
But not, not the ordinance hearing.
No.
So we recessed back into the meeting to vote on the appropriations ordinance during the board meeting.
Right. Do you want to go back to public commentary?
Public commentary was, there was two. One was presenting what a sign would look like for Santa Maria. They're having their garage sale.
Yeah.
And then the second was regarding the, what is the proper term here?
It was regarding, yeah.
Storage facility rental fee. And it was an owner who, who has two properties in Mundaline who spoke against that. Okay, so now we are into the mayor's report. And during the mayor's report, the mayor presented a mayoral proclamation, and these always make me choke up a little bit.
This one really got me.
He was, he was really trying to hold it together and, and you know, it was, it was great to see Adam and him, you know, as I call it, the fishbowl. When people step outside in the hallway and, and they were, you know, you could see that, that it was kind of affecting them, like 30 years of service to say goodbye to the people that you've worked with for so long, for so many years. That's tough. That's tough.
Yeah, it was, but it was He said like, this was the best job he ever had. And I kind of chuckled because I was like, well, I hope so, because you were here 30 years.
Right, right. But yeah, it's, it's, it's always nice when we get to do these and, and but it's also kind of bittersweet to say goodbye to employees that have given so much to, to the village.
Yeah, I'm holding my phone, by the way, because the agenda's on it. I don't want people
You're just scrolling Facebook, we know it.
I prefer Instagram, but it's okay.
Oh, my bad. Next up was the real estate sales contract. So Kara and I had pushed for sale of property for quite a while. It's, that's something that we, we talked about during the election when we ran was, was not purchasing more property and selling excess village property. And this, it takes time, you know, government doesn't do anything fast, that's for sure. And selling and buying property is one of those things that, because it's a large amount of money, it should take a while. So we're happy to, happy to sell this excess property and it was gifted to the village from CN Railroad?
Yep.
Is that right?
Yep, you're right.
Years ago, and I couldn't even tell you when the village received it, but it's now being sold for $600,000, which is great.
Take it.
Yep. And it's back on the tax rolls.
Exactly. And I think you asked later in the meeting, like, okay, what's next? We're selling this, but like, let's not lose sight of the goal. Let's keep moving.
Right, exactly. So we moved into trustee reports and Tonality Brewing was the first one, which we, we talked about, the incentive package. And, and all of that was presented.
Say something really quick about Tonality before we, and I meant to do it while you were talking about like the details of the program. I thought there was two things that really stood out to me. The first thing is, is like, one of the partners is a Mundaline resident and he's building where it lives. And I think that's so cool. And he is, I mean, I don't want to, he's probably like our age, if not a little bit younger, so like young.
Alluded to that.
Yeah, young entrepreneur, he referred to himself as young, so even though he's got almost three kids, kids don't age you, it's fine. Young entrepreneur that's building in the community. So like, I thought that was really cool. And the other thing I wanted to highlight is that the other co-owner has an extensive background in restaurants. And I think that, you know, opening up a restaurant is really, really scary and a lot of work. And I think a lot of the, the fault of people, of restaurateurs is that they're strong chefs and maybe not strong business people, or they're strong business people and not strong chefs. So it's rare that you get a combination of both. So it makes me super excited for that. Um, I lost my train. Oh, and the fact that they've invested so much of their own money into this building and to this project, like they are heart and soul into this, which is
And they're investing what, almost a million dollars into the building, adding elevator and patio space and so much into it.
They have thought of literally everything. I mean, like their presentation, normally when a restaurant comes up for us and gives a presentation, it's like, kind of, you know, they are there to answer questions. Their presentation was, showed their menu, showed their building plans, showed what they're going to do, their vision, completely transparent to us about what they've seen with this facility. And it was it, like, I hate the word kudos because we always use it in meetings and I like whatever, but like mad props to them for, I'm, I'm the only person that will ever use that phrase.
It's like, whoa, okay, mad props.
Mad props. Obviously, kids have made me not cool, so I don't think that's what the kids say anymore, but it, their presentation was just really good. I feel like I want Amanda to like, put that somewhere so that people can see what's coming because it was so good.
Yeah, yeah, I love when spaces are, end of brand, I love when spaces are reused and, and specifically garage door spaces where it kind of creates an indoor-outdoor environment, and that's what they're planning here, and it's going to look so awesome.
You know, um, I, um, we were, we both like coffee and like coffee is like our thing. Tala in, in Highwood occupies the old Highwood Fire Department. And there, and there's like an ice cream shop, I think, next door. They have really like done a cool job with that space in that building. And I, I was there this week and it makes me so excited to see what Tonality will do with this space, so.
Yeah, and Honda too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Honda has the garage space as well.
Yeah.
See, it works, people. It's awesome. All right, what's next?
Um, Tonality Brewing, oh, the big grant. So we talked about the big grant that Tonality got, and then we had another restaurant in town apply for the big grant. So Teddy O'Brien's applied for the big grant to, to do some finessing, I'll use that word, to their outdoor space. Or like making it more legitimate and making it kind of better and
Yeah, they're, they're putting up a fence, kind of blocking off the area to, to create a bigger, better outdoor dining space.
They use the big grants to make it bigger and better.
Oh, my gosh.
I know, I need to get out one.
Well, and that's the end of the meeting then.
Bye, guys.
No, okay. And then we did a, a variance for a property at 300 Townline Road. So this is the tile store, but a building behind the tile store that's now going to be used for indoor storage.
It's not the tile store, it's where
Not the tile store, it's the building behind it.
Yeah, but it's not, the tile store is not there.
It's not a tile store anymore. It's just what I think of it as.
Baseball training facility.
Correct.
So cool.
Yes, it is. Nothing from Public Works this evening. Next up was Finance Committee. And so the annual appropriations ordinance. We, we passed that last year. It was, oh my gosh, I don't have it in front of me, 92, 96, 94 million. This year it was 84. So it's a lower, lower appropriations ordinance.
I hope that he doesn't watch this, but the village administrator has done an excellent job of managing our finances. I will never say that to his face, so don't you ever repeat this, anybody watching. But he has done a really good job of getting rid of what we want to get rid of, like selling property like as you see, and then like managing the budget well, so.
And he changed the budget presentation, and I liked the way that it was presented. It worked out well.
Dare I say, he's doing a decent job.
He is. So we passed that appropriations ordinance. Next up was the governing body bill approval. And all of the information for the bill approval is in our packet. It's also on the finance page, so you can see every penny and where it's spent within the village. So that was 799,874.55. Next was public safety.
That's me.
That's you. Go.
So this was just an ordinance to pass what we had talked about, was that three weeks? I don't know, maybe a month ago now.
That was the last meeting.
Was it last, okay. Well, we talked about the last meeting about recouping costs for fire services at accidents. So this, the couple of questions that I had was like, who is doing this? It's the same company that is doing our ambulance billing, so they're very proficient at it, they're familiar with it. I think it's 100 plus other municipalities in Illinois do the same thing. We're not, again, reinventing the wheel here. We're just doing what we should have been doing before. So Andre's Medical Billing, I think is the name of the company that does this, will be collecting. And there's like a whole fee schedule, you know, so we always talk about that there's an agenda packet. If, if this interests you and you're listening or watching, like, reach out to me and I'll show you where in the agenda it says it. But you alluded to the fact, like, when you first read it, it sounded scary to you. And then you
The, the motion was, you know, it says for recovery fee for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the fire department. I was like, oh, my gosh, that makes it sound like anybody who calls 911 is getting a bill. No, 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 that's not what this is at all. This is the village of Mundaline, well, the fire department, billing your car insurance for for services that are rendered and not necessarily yours, but the party that's at fault.
Yeah.
And this is a way to collect for, for when tools break. Some of the tools that are used out there can be upwards of two to four, even several thousand dollars more. And when they break, the taxpayer, all of us are responsible for that. And this is a way to, to recoup those expenses.
Yeah, so the devil's in the details on this one. If you're interested in it and you need help understanding it, reach out, send me an email. Tap me on the shoulder when I'm out somewhere and I'll show you an agenda where it is. What?
Yeah.
I'm out, oh, I mean, like, please don't tap me on the shoulder when I'm at Target and in sweatpants and a hoodie and I'll be, I'll be mortified.
No, totally do it, do it.
Right now, so.
Yeah, welcome to our home. What about the chiefs?
Um, the Mundaline fishing, the cops and bobbers was Saturday, Saturday, and they my, I just lost my shit. Monahan, my God, what's wrong with me? Monahan said that there was 190 fishers there, which is crazy, that's a lot. And then Chief Clark touched on the blood drive, which they collected 70 plus units of blood.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty good.
Good turnout. And then, and then also really good, no accidents over the Fourth of July, no fireworks accidents.
Right.
So, and both alluded to a successful community days. There you go.
Right.
Good stuff, man.
Next was Building Committee, which had no motions and no report, transportation and infrastructure had nothing, nothing under other reports. We moved into the omnibus vote list, which is where items that are not going to be controversial, hopefully, are, are placed. And these are generally things that the, the, the board is expected, not expected, anticipated to, to, to just pass. So one is temporary signs for revenge sale, allowing them in the, in the right of way for Santa Maria. And the second is Park Street Design Project. So this is in, in the omnibus list because it's something that the board's already talked about extensively. And it's money that we've already authorized, but because it's more than $20,000, the board has to vote on it. And this was 29,500 to Kimley Horn. So that's in the packet.
Also, this was already budgeted and accounted for.
Correct.
Approved and all.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the amount that we're, we're addressing really.
Almost like the perks order, you're finally.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So next was back to that Park Street funding. This is under the village administrator's report and, and he can't make motions, but he asked for motions. And one was for the authorization to expend another $150,000. And I, I'll be honest, I was reluctant because when, when the board spoke about this to begin with, you know, he had asked for the 300,000 and we said, well, let's start with 150. We were concerned, you know, we were taking that money from the sale of excess property and that, that sale had not gone through yet. So here we are being asked for another $150,000 and that sale of property has still not gone through. Personally, I felt that it was close enough. So the, the property that we're talking about was one that's in Vernon Hills, that's being sold to Lake County. And all of the, all of the governmental agencies involved, the Vernon Hills, us, the county, we're all moving towards that goal. We all passed the, the proper ordinances and variances and everything else that needs to, to happen to get that moving. And then we also, like we talked about earlier, are selling another one for $600,000. We, we have some other properties in the works as well. So I think we were in a good financial place to expend this, so I was willing to vote on it.
Gunther, the village administrator touched on that, that sale that we're, that you're talking about is going to close in like two to three weeks because all the
Right.
Things have been done. So there's nothing that could like hinder it at this point.
Exactly, yeah.
And I did make him list out how we were funding this, you know, like I, I asked him like, what, where are we getting the money? And he split, he felt, he listed that, the property we just did today. We have an agreement with a, with the IDNR that's still in works that couldn't, you know, possibly come to fruition. So there is some funding for it, so.
Absolutely, yeah. And then next up was, excuse me, next up was the self-storage facility rental fee. So this was a fee that was being proposed on storage units in the village of Mundaline. And I did not favor this. And I came to the, the board meeting with some information that I had, had dug up on this. And there's a couple ways, so, okay, so let me step back here. The, the ordinance is asking for 5%, a 5% fee to be charged to the tenants, 5% of the rent that's collected. So if the rent's a hundred dollars, you know, we would collect $5 every month on, on that storage unit. And I remember when I started in municipal government, fees have to be associated to some work that the village is providing. Where taxes can be a percentage that's just taxed upon whoever it's being taxed on, whether it's sales tax, property taxes, or whatever that tax may be, motor vehicle. So these fees, I was looking at, at the documents and, and we were going to be collecting at the low end, $160,000 and at the high end, $650,000, depending on the rents and occupancy levels of these, these facilities. And with 2100, 2200 units in Mundaline at, at five properties, you know, that we were collecting a lot. And I'm wondering what we were doing with that. So asking about that in the meeting, we had 88 calls for service. And we'd been told that prior to the meeting. And I, I didn't know that these calls for service also included things for public works. So I took them as calls to the police department. And looking back over some data that had been provided to trustees and our, our annual reports from the police department. We, we had about 20, 25,000 calls over two years. So that 88 calls was over two years. There's your dog. But this
One of my dogs.
So the, the 25,000, 25,000 calls and to the, to the police department overall, all the way through Mundaline. And I looked at that and said, okay, well, 88 calls out of 25,000 is, is a very small amount. So doing the math on that, it's 0.0035% of the calls were for these five facilities, less than 1%. And I broke it down by the budget and 25,000 calls divided by the police department's budget comes out to $995 per call. And I just, doing the math on it, it seemed like our fee was, in my opinion, a bit excessive. I, I didn't like that we were charging way more than what the village services were providing. And I felt that we were pigeonholing these five businesses, just these five. And the majority of their business comes from within three miles. And that's going to affect Mundaline residents and business owners who utilize storage spaces. So I, I just, I spoke against it. I wasn't in favor of it. And, and ultimately the motion failed. It actually almost didn't make it to the floor. The, the motion was asked for and it kind of had to be asked for a second time by the mayor before it was brought up and got a second. So it, it failed four to two. And I'm not sure what the, the future holds for that, but today, the, the self-storage rental fee is not enacted. Anything you want to add to that, Kara?
This was your show. So I mean, I think at least personally, I'll just say that I had come into this thinking, no big deal, it's another fee, whatever. You know, we charge a hotel tax. It was like, to me, it was like not an issue. And then trustee Schwank sold us. So Eric definitely put on like a compelling, uh, put out a compelling argument for this. And I think that me and another, enough you of the other trustees really were persuaded by his numbers and argument and facts. And so, yeah, I mean, mad props.
Thank you.
I'm going to make mad props. And I'm going to try to say that.
Props, alright. We need a graphic on the screen for that. Mad props.
Well, because kudos is so lame. Mad props. Do you also just hear my, do you just hear my kid screaming?
Yes.
Okay, that's my one-year-old.
Oh.
She's screaming mama at the top of her lungs.
You're in high demand.
Oh, my God.
All right, well, let's finish it up so you can go be mama. Uh, nothing from the, nothing from the village attorney or the village clerk. There was no executive session. And, um, that wrapped up the board meeting. There was, I think, there was a, a motion to adjourn, and, um, that one doesn't require like a, a roll call, though. You could just do a voice vote, and there wasn't enough voice to actually count it, so we kind of had to do it again. I think we were all just a bit done by that point.
Yeah, we are. I mean, the, the, the storage arguments became, you know, it was an argument.
It was a bit heated.
It was a debate, not an argument.
It was a discussion, yeah.
Discussion, there we go.
Yeah.
So, here's what needs to pop up on the screen. Discussion and mad props.
Discussion, mad props, okay.
Alright, dude.
Well, that's it. Uh, we will be back next week.
No, we won't because you're on vacation. We will not be back next week. Eric's on vacation.
We're not, we're not going to Zoom again and talk about something else?
No, because you're on vacation. This is your working, so I made you do it, but you're on vacation next week.
Got it. Alright, we won't be back next week. We'll be back the week after.
Two weeks to talk about the board meeting. But, 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 but before we go, Monday, big day.
Oh, my gosh. It is going to be amazing. The bike race, the Mundaline Grand Prix. Mad props, did I get that right?
Mad props, Taylor.
Mad props to Taylor for pulling this all together. And, uh, you know, Taylor, of course, we gave him mad props at the board meeting, and then he gave all the mad props away to all the other people in the village.
Yeah.
Um, he's very humble about it, and I appreciate that. So,
Yeah.
Uh, this, you know, this was brought by Taylor several months ago, and the, the board backed it. And here we are, a week away from the event, and it's going to be exciting to watch.
I'm so excited. He, did he say four hundred cyclists?
Yeah, and there's some pretty big names like in cycling that I don't know that he was excited about.
I know, it's cool. So, that's Monday. Um, Friday, I just want to touch on really quick. Friday's Kids Night at the farmer's market.
Yeah.
So, um, Becca, who's the market manager, is doing a great job, and she has come up with like a bunch of fun stuff for the kids to do on Friday. My husband just texted me, can I come in and get a diaper? So, welcome to my life. Great.
I was going to see, do we have? Uh, oh, I don't have it with me. There's a whole bunch of stickers that are pretty amazing.
For the bike race?
For the bike race.
Okay, so Friday, Kids Night at the farmer's market. Sunday, concert in the park, hopefully it doesn't rain. Monday, the bike race. So, like, Monday is going to be awesome, but don't forget that roads are closed for the bike race. So, don't yell at us.
It's going to be
Roads are closed. We're telling you now, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm excited. I'll, maybe I'll go live for the bike race on Monday.
Do it.
Because I'm volunteering at like, thanks, Taylor, eight in the morning.
Whoa.
Yeah.
More coffee.
Cheers.
Yeah, cheers. Alright, well, we will see you in two weeks.
Have a good vacation.
Tune in, yeah. Thank you. And we'll see you next time.
Bye, safe. Bye.
Bye.